I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosehacker, Vice Chair, and I'm Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during this hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remain on consent. When the case is heard, you'll have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. With that said, I'm going to get started on the consent cases. Again, if you want one of those cases removed, you need to stand up and let me know, and I will remove that from the agenda, and then it will be heard after we go through all the consent cases. Agenda Item Number Four, Case C-3-24-132, C-10-24-97, C-12-24-98. Applicant: Bennington Public Schools. It is on consent for approval. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Military 180 Crossing, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4, along with approval of a waiver to the PDZ Present Development Zone. This was laid over from our May meeting, location northeast of 180 Street and Military Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Five, Case C-7-24-96. Applicant: Bennington Public Schools. It is on consent for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow secondary educational facilities in the R4 District with a waiver to Section 55-186 Height to allow a 50-foot tall building. Laid over from our May meeting, location northeast of 180 Street and Military Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seven, Case C-3-24-175. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the disposition of city-owned property. Location: 4702 South 25th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Ten, Case C-12-24-164. Applicant: Hawkins Construction Company. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Harvey Industrial Replat III, a minor plat inside city limits. Location: 4420 South 67th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Case C-10-24-9, C-12-24-10. Applicant: 183 Maple LLC. On for approval. Request: Revised preliminary plat approval of West Maple Hills, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. Location: Northeast of Big Alk Parkway and West Maple Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Case C-10-24-102, C-12-24-103. Applicant: Metropolitan Community College. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of MCC Elcorn Campus, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from AG, R5, and R6 to R5, along with approval of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: Northeast of 204th Street and West Dodge Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Case C-10-24-159. Applicant: Jose Martinez. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R5-35 to R7. Property is located within an NCE Overlay District. Location: 3006 and 3010 South 9th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Case C-10-4-306. Applicant: Maple 165 LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use District Development Agreement for Maple Valley. Location: 16510 Bedford Ave. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-three, Case C-8-24-160. Applicant: Haley Longo. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow daycare general in the R4 District. Location: 7153 North 165th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-five, Case C-7-24-115. Applicant: Metropolitan Community College. On for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow college and university facilities in the R5 District. Location: Northeast of 204th Street and West Dodge Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-six, Case C-10-24-174, C-7-24-165. Applicant: 3732 Holdings II LLC. On for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to Section 55-883Q to allow single-family detached in the LC District with rezoning from R2 and LC to LC, along with approval of the MCC Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location: 8810 and 8820 Blondo Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-seven, Case C-4-24-161. Applicant: Planning Board. It's on for consent for approval. Request: Approval of the vacation of an irregular portion of the right-of-way located at the intersection of 8th Street and Riverfront Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nine, Case C-3-24-146. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of the Central Park Plaza, the Duo Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan. Location: 222 South 15th and 201 South 16th Streets. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Case C-10-4-306. Applicant: K-9 Resorts. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use District Development Agreement for Maple Valley. Location: 16510 Bedford Ave. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-one, Case C-11-21-249. Applicant: Lyric Town Homes. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the PER Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. Location: 1110 South 20th Avenue Plaza. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Those were the consent cases. I'm going to take a motion on the consent cases that are on for approval.
Approve Agenda Items Number Four, Five, Seven, Ten, Eleven, Fourteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, Twenty-three, Twenty-five, Twenty-six, and Twenty-seven.
Do you have a motion and a second? Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Do we have a motion for the consent cases that were on for layover?
I'll move to layover Agenda Items Nine, Eighteen, and Twenty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, those were the consent cases. Everything was left on consent. If you were here for one of those cases, no further action will be taken today. We thank you for coming down. You're welcome to stay, or you are free to leave. It's up to you. But we thank you for all coming down. The first two cases are on the administrative meeting only, means that there will not be opportunity for public testimony. Agenda Item Number One, Case C-10-21-101, C-12-21-102. Applicant: Celebrity Homes Omaha. Request: Final plat approval of Majestic 178 Lots 99 through 196, Outlots D through H, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. Location: South 175th Street and Blue Heron Parkway. Eric?
Yeah, so this final plat is the second phase of Majestic 178. It's for 98 single-family residential lots, five outlots, and less than about 29 and a half acres. The preliminary plat was approved back in 2021 with the first-phase final plat approved in August of 2022. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4. Approval of the final plat of Majestic 178, subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Any comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the rezoning from AG to R4 and approval of the final plat of Majestic 178, subject to submittal of an acceptable subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request onto City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-12-24-6. Applicant: Timothy Banghart. Request: Final plat approval of Banghart Edition, a minor plat outside city limits, laid over from our January meeting of this year. Location: 9205 North 156th Street. Eric?
Yeah, so this had come to Planning Board back in January of this year. The final plat was laid over to allow additional time for the applicant to submit preapproval from the State of Nebraska regarding the proposed onsite septic system. That information has been received. They've also gone to the Zoning Board of Appeals for the necessary lot-size waiver. The subdivision agreement will account for future sewer and access stipulations regarding potential development of surrounding properties, so that will be accounted for. Staff recommends approval of the final plat, subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council.
Any comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the final plat, subject to the submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to submittal to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
We're going to take Agenda Items Number Three and Six together. Agenda Item Number Three, Case C-12-22-61. Applicant: John Alexander. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Sycamore Farms, a minor plat outside city limits with a waiver to Section 5399 Sidewalks. Property is located within the Floodway Overlay District. This was laid over from our meeting, October 5th meeting, I'm sorry, 2022. Location: Northeast of River Road Drive and West Dodge Road. And Agenda Item Number Six, Case C-7-22-72. Applicant: John Alexander. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow a campground in the AG District. Property is, excuse me, located within the Floodway Overlay District, also laid over from our October 2022 meeting. Location: Northeast of River Road Drive and West Dodge Road. Is the applicant here? Okay? Please come forward, give your name and address, please.
I'm John Alexander, 1150 River Road Drive, Waterloo, Nebraska, 68069. Glad to be here and happy to answer any questions or provide any information.
Okay?
Thanks, John.
You bet. Thank you, John. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Hi, John. How are you?
I'm good.
Orhan Saran, 7805 Leavenworth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, representing Gene Saran, my father. We have the adjacent piece of property to Mr. Alexander's, and we look forward to him doing his development. Our question is merely how soon we can get access to our land that we haven't had access to for the last 30 years because we've been landlocked. Part of his condition is to allow us an easement to reach our piece of property that is now encompassed by Mr. Alexander's. So I'm not against it, merely a question how soon we can activate the easement, and maybe that's more for Mr. Alexander to answer.
Yeah, he'll address that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Okay, seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. John, did you want to come forward and address the landlock and the easement?
Yeah, so it's kind of been a weird piece of property that's in there, and it's a very small piece of property, and part of the development negotiations with the city was to provide an easement to Mr. Gungor, and we are willing to do that.
John, just a second.
I guess I would just maybe like go, sorry.
Can we turn the volume up, or can you bring the mics up closer to you?
You betcha.
There you go.
Is that better?
Yeah.
I'm more than happy to allow the access to Mr. Gungor. I understand it's his property, and he wants to use it. Any information that he would provide about what use he intends to do, which I would appreciate that, but if not, understandable, but as part of the process, we are granting an easement to that property and hope to work with him and his family going forward.
Okay, thank you. Did that answer your question?
So I understand.
I close the public hearing, but I'll call you up.
Oh, I appreciate it.
So my underst- Give your name and address.
My name is Orhan Saran, 7805 Leavenworth Street, Omaha, Nebraska. We look forward to having Mr. Alexander as a neighbor, so my understanding is that the easement can be put into effect essentially once the Board votes, correct?
Eric will answer that.
Well, there's a condition that the access easement be provided with the plat, but that would take several months for it to proceed to City Council and for the plat to be recorded. I could say that an easement could be provided just separately outside of the plating process, you know, if the applicant was willing to do that. That wouldn't involve any city departments or anything like that. That would just be-
John, is that okay by you?
That's something we're not to discuss.
Well, we waited 30 years. It'd be nice to be able to get to the piece of property, so.
We can certainly discuss.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. You've made the commitment to discuss this.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Yep. Any additional comments, questions from the Board?
I do have a question, John, if you could come up briefly, just regarding the operations. I know staff has had conversations with you or your representative. Could you just touch a little bit on, obviously this is in the floodway, and we have a lot of criteria and conditions laid out in the recommendation reports, just because of that area that's prone to flooding, which, you know, we don't need to tell you about, of course, with what you experienced five years ago and, you know, the major flooding of the Elcorn. Could you just touch briefly, and it sounds like you're maybe accounting for, you know, both long-term and short-term camping at the facility? I mean, of course, you talk about the lease, and, you know, a lot of that would lead to the long-term, you know, use of the facility during the, you know, the summer hours, spring, summer and fall. But just, do you have a summary of how you envision, you know, providing the trucking in service of emptying, you know, the pumping out from the specific RVs as far as waste and things like that?
So we envision, obviously with the floodway, there's no septic system allowed, so I know Mike is a camper, and as Mike Carter with the city has kind of questioned us on how we envision that pumping service going, and we see like a weekly or every-two-weeks-type service for the long-term people, and we think it'll be a service that people would appreciate, because I know Mike, the worst part about camping is, you know, the sewage part of it with your gray and black water, so we want to provide that as a service where they don't actually have to think about that or deal with it. And as far as, you know, flooding and whatnot, we obviously have an emergency evacuation plan in place, and we'll have the weather-tuned radio and whatnot, and follow the flooding of the river very closely so we can evacuate if needed. The last thing we want to do is, you know, have an emergency situation arise where we're having evacuation, so we will be proactive with monitoring the river and making appropriate actions at that time.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
John, how does that work with the water? You don't have a spigot at each site.
Not at each-
So if someone's there for the entire summer or months, do they have to take their trailer out, or how does that, they bring it back in with a, I mean, they can bring a tank of water in? How's that work?
Sure. I've seen people do that, applications where they'll have the cubes of water at their site, and then you can come and fill that, you know, once a week or every two weeks for their water. We do have water on site, so we would, you know, have regional, I guess, spigots there, and potentially we could expand that water to provide-
The water's on your own well?
We have our own well, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I guess to touch on that, obviously it's your well. I don't know what the capacity is, but you must not have immediate concerns as far as...
It's a big well. This was a previous gigantic horse farm, so they had irrigation wells in place, so it's pretty capable. I don't know that it's capable of providing water at every single site, but we were envisioning more of a regional, where you have maybe 10 sites serviced by a spigot, and, you know, see how that goes as we expand.
Okay. Obviously, you would have to have some kind of service and tracking of, you know, how you're charging, you know, individually. I don't know if those details are worked out yet, or...
We've got a couple campsite management software platforms that we've looked at, but just to start, we're going to just, you know, kind of manage it as any other, you know, business as we go and expand as we, you know. Main thing was just to get approval here to see how far we, you know, to keep moving ahead, I guess. So now that we hopefully get approval, we can start to iron out some of those details as far as software packages and whatnot.
Okay. Just keep city staff attuned if there are, you know, changes, if we need to do, you know, some type of amendment, even if it's a minor amendment to update the operations plans.
Okay.
Just keep us updated, you know, if there's anything more specific as far as the operations that change over time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Eric, did you want to...
No, I'll give the recommendation. There's two case items, so specifically for Agenda Item Three, staff recommends approval of a waiver to Section 5399 Sidewalks, and then approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the seven conditions in the report. I guess, you know, we talked about this great detail in the pre-meeting. If you do have specific questions, you know, I guess I didn't go into a lot of detail here, but I can do so. The waiver of the sidewalks is due to the location in the Elcorn Exurban Zone as well as the floodway, so that's commonly supported in this area.
Final plat.
Final plat.
I'm sorry, thank you. And also approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval and submittal of a final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the waiver to Section 5399 Sidewalks, and approval of the preliminary plat, subject to meeting the seven conditions outlined in the report, and approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions of the preliminary plat approval, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request onto City Council for final action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda Item Number Six.
Yeah, for Agenda Item Six, I guess I'll get into a few of the specifics here just for this, placing it on the record. So, of course, this case had been previously laid over a couple times back in 2022. The applicant has obviously provided sufficient information for us to recommend approval. There are 67 total pad sites, which is a decrease from what was previously proposed of over 100 sites. There are a few zoning waivers that are being requested and being supported. Some of that is dealing with providing circulation on non-paved areas, so that does not account for the entrance off of the public street of River Road Drive or the ADA-compliant parking stalls. Outside of that, there are gravel areas, but because of the floodway, that is typically supported by staff. We have other conditions that account for the operations, you know, kayaks, canoes, tubing, can't be a commercial operation, just utilized by those using the campground. There's commentary on golf carts and prohibited of those. We are supporting a waiver of allowing camping in excess of 30 days. There's commentary and stipulations as far as the RVs and restroom facilities being highway-ready, as well as support from the Plumbing Board and Zoning Board of Appeals regarding those temporary restroom facilities. Of course, the operation will need to comply with the Flood Plane Development Regulations that the City of Omaha has in place. That includes a no-rise certificate provided, signed and sealed by registered professional engineer. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit to allow campground in the AG District, subject to the 10 conditions in the report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve conditional use permit to allow campground in the AG District, subject to the 10 conditions in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha, request approval of the workforce housing round three TIF redevelopment project plan. Location southeast of Fortieth and Lake Streets. And Don, you're presenting.
Yeah, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This is an affordable housing development in North Omaha by Holy Name Housing Corporation. They have eleven vacant, single-family lots that are being replatted and reconfigured into thirteen vacant lots. They're going to develop a total of thirteen single-family detached homes, one on each of these lots. They're asking for five hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars in TIF support, which includes capitalized interest. It's about a three-point-eight million dollar project. These homes will be for-sale homes for income-qualified households. The project complies with the city's master plan, been approved by the TIF committee, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don.
Incidentally, the houses look pretty much like this.
Any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Matthew Kavanaugh, Holy Name Housing Corporation, forty-three twenty-four Fort Street. So the, the applicant, this is, I'll just say quickly, happy to answer any questions, but this is part of, we were here last month for another similar project, same house, same neighborhood, but smaller. That was a rental project that's gonna complement this one. So we're basically trying to focus on this Erskine Park neighborhood redevelopment, infill housing. So as Don said, these units will be for sale, so these thirteen will complement the four that we were here for TIF for last month, which will be permanent rentals. Happy to answer any questions.
How soon do we think the units would be available? Once approved?
Is quick, so we're ready, we have the financing and we have, we're prepared to begin construction as soon as the TIF is approved. So we can finish the unit about six months and be on a staggered timeline from there. So first one, six months from TIF approval and then the last one would be probably about every two weeks, you know, pending any other unforeseen circumstances. So between six and twelve months for the whole supply. Yeah, so this is under the state's workforce housing program. So we have a pot of money that we lend to ourselves. It's a revolving loan fund that we use as a, a construction financing to finance the construction of these homes. So we have the money already secured from the state between, with a match from philanthropy and we'll lend it to ourselves as construction financing. So that's a zero percent construction loan. That's another source of subsidy in the project and then we sell the homes and revolve it and hopefully come back here and talk to you about the next time we're doing it.
We're doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, obviously, there's a great need for more affordable housing units in all shapes and forms, so we always appreciate working with our partners who provide that type of, type of housing. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
We'll take agenda items number twelve and twenty-two together. Agenda item number twelve, case C ten dash sixty-two dash eighty-one, C ten dash ten dash ninety-four, C ten dash twenty-four dash one sixty-six, C twelve dash twenty-four dash one sixty-seven. Applicant, Alameda Leavenworth LLC, request preliminary and final plat approval of Keywitz subdivision replat one, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from R seven and G C to T O D two M X along with the repeal of the A C I overlay and P K overlay for a portion of the site. Location southeast of twenty-seventh and Leavenworth. Agenda item number twenty-two, case C ten dash twenty-four dash one sixty-eight. Applicant, Alameda Leavenworth LLC, request approval of a P U R plan unit redevelopment overlay district. Location southeast of twenty-seventh and Leavenworth Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Thank you all for your work this evening, this afternoon. I think we're the only ones in the city working at this point today. I'm Tom McLevy, fifty-two hundred Webster Street here in Omaha. I am the co-developer of this project along with Brett West with Assuredy Life Insurance Company is here as well. We've been working on this, this particular land for probably almost a decade now, but excited about this project. As you've seen, it's a hundred and ninety-four units, a Class A apartment product, a, a originally amenitized project of, of providing, you know, really a good, a good draw, a good reason to start to pull the development down Leavenworth Street. I think this is the right project and the right location at the right time. There's been some really good development coming along Leavenworth Street, as you might have all seen, west of the interstate. This project, I think, has the gravity to start pulling the development further towards downtown. We are in the zone of influence for the streetcar on the, the very southern edge to create a, a bookend, I think, for that further development that will happen within the streetcar. Happy to answer any questions you all have and appreciate your support.
Any questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Additional comments or questions before we hear from Sidney? Were you gonna say something? Okay. Eric?
Yeah, so just to kind of reiterate what Tom had mentioned, there's been a lot of activity along Leavenworth Street, you know, especially as you head further west, closer to the Med Center. So, you know, we think it's an exciting project, has taken a little while to get here. Obviously, there was a previous version, but, you know, we, we are excited for more housing in close proximity to the urban core and specifically for agenda item number twelve, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R seven and G C to T O D two M X, approval of the repeal of the A C I one overlay district, approval of the repeal of the P K overlay district, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the five conditions, approval of the final plat subject to a final subdivision agreement prior to city council.
Do we have a motion?
The approval of rezoning the site from R seven and G C to T O D two M X, approval of the repeal of the A C I one P L district, approval of the repeal of the P K overlay district, approval of the preliminary and final plat subject to the following five conditions and approval of the final plat subject, subject to compliance with the conditions of preliminary plat approval and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to city council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
We're gonna take agenda items number thirteen-
One second. Number twenty-two? Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So this is the P U R component. I just wanted to mention, you know, there's a few items that will have to be finalized before it goes forward to city council that are identified in the recommendation report as far as building materials. Just making sure that the calculation on the transparency requirement is, is being done on the south facade, especially with the garage portion being exposed. A few, few other items like that. So we'll just need to coordinate on finalization of those plans, but staff recommends approval of the P U R overlay subject to submittal of acceptable plans prior to city council.
Do we have a motion?
Can I ask you a question of Tom real quick before we take a motion?
Sure.
I just was almost out of here.
Oh, I saw you try to say that. Have you had a neighborhood meeting?
What was that?
Have you had a neighborhood meeting?
We, I have reached out, we've heard from some neighbors, I've reached out to a number of neighbors. There does not appear to be a, a regular neighborhood meeting that occurs. I have talked with Councilman Begley, this is his district, about neighborhood representatives. He is identifying folks to have further discussions, but we have spoken with them and then there's another neighborhood association in the north that I do plan on attending that we're not actually in that neighborhood association, but we would look at attending that in the upcoming month before city council.
Yeah, 'cause we got some correspondence from neighbors, as you might expect from this, mostly regarding the concern of parking, which several of us on the board at the pre-meeting also expressed some concern over too. So you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Yeah.
The parking ratios allowed under the, under the current designation, but obviously there's a lack of parking in that area already.
Yeah, the, I, I, we did receive a copy one correspondence from a California resident who owns rental property there. The other folks I've spoken with around the location understood that as, as the area densifies and the streetcar comes through and we start having those uses, they understood that parking is part of it. There is, we've, we've maximized really the parking we could on the site. We've really gotten every nook and cranny to make sure that we do have parking there. I, I will note one of the conditions was working with Orbit, not Orbit, sorry, Metro Transit, have already met with them, talked with them about where they want to locate the bus stop on this site. They said they were willing to, as part of that conversation, they said they'd be happy to come and speak and explain how Metro Transit would, likes a project like this, thinks it's, it's the right type of use for, to continue to enhance our Metro Transit system. There will be a stop right on our property.
And you're okay with that?
Yeah, cor, yeah, it will be right. It's, there's one there already, so we will continue to have a spot right on Leavenworth there, going down east towards Omaha, downtown Omaha. So I think the combination of, we already have a, a, a bus stop there, we have a streetcar here in the works, we have, is, you know, maximize really the good, a good amount of parking in this project in the basement adjacent to it. I think we're, we're in good shape with it. You know, the, the neighborhood, as I said, west and Leavenworth has been developing, you know, I, I believe well and there's been some kerfuffle, I'll use the word, at parking there and I think that's showing through time to have been overblown and it's, it's finding its level. I sometimes view, I, I did quite a bit of work in the Blackstone District, developing a lot of that and, and I view parking as, it's kind of like water, it finds its level. You know, it finds, it finds a way and, and, and that's what I think's materialized in the, the other parts of the city. So we're, we feel good about it. We're not concerned that the market won't accept this project, we think it will. Obviously, we're putting a lot of money, time and effort into it, which to me speaks volumes.
Very good. Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve P U R plan unit redevelopment overlay district subject to submittal of available P U R plans prior to submittal to the city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda item number thirteen and twenty-four, we'll take together. Agenda item number thirteen is case C ten dash twenty-four dash one seventy-one, C twelve dash twenty-four dash one seventy-two. Applicant McGill Industrial Park LLC and Burlington Park Two LLC. Request preliminary plat approval of McGill Industrial Park, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from A G and G to G I and H I. Northeast, location northeast of Rainwood Road and Blair High Road. And agenda item number twenty-four, case C eight dash twenty-four dash one seventy-three. Applicant Burlington Park Two LLC, request approval of a special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the G I district. Location, north of a hundred and eleventh street and Rainwood Road. And Brent, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman. Brent Beller, one-one-four-zero, Westerner Road, on behalf of the applicant. So we actually have two applicants on this and that's Burlington Capital, I'm sorry, Burlington Park Industrial and Jesse Calabretto is here on behalf of them and then also McGill Industrial Park. We actually, there's, there's two acreages here. There's the north acreage, which I'll show you in a minute, and then there's the Frost property, which is currently under contract by Burlington Park. So they're gonna co-develop this industrial park as one single development. But I want to start real quick just because, answer any questions. So industrial, right now, is a use we need in our city and like all cities, industrial ground is, is few and far to come between. So you can kind of see, the gray areas on our future land map, this is from the city of Omaha's comprehensive plan, shows obviously north of the airport, along I eighty and then up here to the north, there is some untapped industrial ground, which is where this project's gonna be. So here's the actual site, it's bordered in orange here. I'm gonna draw a line right there. North here, that's McGill. So they've owned this property for a while now. They wanted to do an industrial development here, but the issue on this particular piece of property is it doesn't, it didn't have sewer. You needed to have this property go in order to get services up to this northern property. This property is owned by Mr. and Mrs. Frost. This is their homestead, this is where they live and farm. They have elected to sell that property and so when they did that, developers see that and they go and they try to buy this property, which is currently under contract. But this is, as you know, this is how developers do development. We follow the comprehensive plan. This has been master planned, this area for industrial. If you go south on Blair High Road, this is Rain, Rainwood Point, I actually represent that S I D, that's an industrial development. If you go further south, there's more industrial uses all along Blair High Road. In fact, there's, right in here, there's a car salvage type uses and then west of here, if you've driven out that way, there's a ton of use. I think it's secretive, I don't know what it is per se, but it's been intense and they've been at it for a couple of years now as we sit and have watched that development go. But a hundred and ninety-eight acres here, it's an industrial development, so we do have that mix of G I and H I. And so here's our actual plan, and I'm sorry, Kyle Hossi with E and A Engineering, he's actually, he's here and he's the one who put this beautiful plan together. So the lighter purple is all our G I development. There'll be nineteen lots in total. The two darker purple, that's the H I, so forty-six acres of the hundred and ninety-eight, just under a quarter will be H I. It's, you know, the, the issue on this particular development will be just how we grade it, how we do it all together. This site kind of flows from the north to the south, so all of our water, all the grade, we will be pushing dirt down to this general area to kind of follow the contours of the site. We had a neighborhood meeting on Monday night, it was pretty well-attended, ten to fifteen people came out. We sent those notices on June twenty-first to make sure people had enough time to, to get notice of the meeting. And we had a lot of questions from folks that bordered this, these particular lots. Learned a lot in the sense that some of them have built the homes, some of them have built them and lived them and sold them. And so they were curious mainly about what we call Street B right here. This is a, a connection that will connect to that frontage road. The, the issue on that, and as your staff recommendation report notifies you, we don't know if this connection will actually be made. We only, we don't know that only because N dot controls Highway one thirty-three Blair High Road. And so there's some conversations that will have to be had as to whether or not this connection will be made. And I think we support the city's connectivity policy, we obviously want connectivity, but if this road goes away, it, it doesn't cause us any heartburn, it's just less cost. And that's really up to the city, N dot and Douglas County as to how that goes. Otherwise, questions on traffic? The majority of traffic is gonna go here. that goes. Otherwise, questions on traffic. The majority of traffic is going to go here. This is why this is industrial. This is Blair High Road, this is our main artery. If you've driven out that way, you're going to see that OPPD, NDOT, they're all going to town improving this accessway as a way to get to I- six eighty. And that's why this is really important for industrial. But the majority of our traffic will all go west to Blair High Road. This connection up here on Bennington Road will be made, and the reason that's being made is NDOT eventually will have this intersection be a full movement intersection. It's lighted right now, but we are told that eventually there'll be on and off ramps, and it'll look more like an interstate interchange than it does now. The other major entry and exit is this entrance right here on Rainwood. That will be, we'll have a stoplight there. SID five fifty-two, which is Rainwood Point, which is right here, they actually have in their subdivision agreement that when this property is all developed, there's a cost sharing that will go on for that streetlight. So none of the other neighbors, whether to the east, I'm sorry, whether to the east or to the west, will contribute to any of that. And so we had a healthy conversation with some of the residents, just explaining everything that we're doing won't impact them at all from a financial perspective as far as contributing to anything that we're doing right now. So the other item that's, so that's for our preliminary plat today. The other item in front of you is actually a special use permit for Lot seventeen. So this is Lot seventeen right here, and that special use permit is for scrap and salvage. I know, and Eric, I don't want to get out ahead of myself, but I know the city has contemplated whether or not we change GI zoning to allow for scrap and salvage within the GI, but I don't think that's been done yet. So we still go with the special use permit, which is what we're requesting here. The use here, and this is the only piece of property that we have any users under contract for, is a concrete recycling plant. So if you've seen those around town, this particular user is called Crushing It. They have about three or four operations, I believe, in and around Omaha, top-notch operator. They use state-of-the-art sort of water dampening systems, misting facilities, to make sure that any concrete or dust stays on-site. That's both required by EPA, that's required by the City of Omaha, and it's also required via our covenants that we'll have privately on this development. They also do, they have to have formal street sweeping, all that sort of stuff to keep, make sure their site stays clean. But otherwise, this will function like an industrial development. Burlington Park, we actually did this almost identical development out in Gretna, and it's been a huge success. And most of the users, people hear industrial, and they think scrap and salvage, car recycling, that's not really what is going to go on. If you look at Burlington Park, we have sports, youth, we have a church, we have city offices, we have lawn mowing companies, those types of folks that go and want these sorts of larger acreages for their storage of equipment and that sort of thing. And really, the industrial code is heavy on the screening and make sure that we don't see all that sort of stuff. So that's what we envision will be exactly here, too. And of course, there's a number of other uses that can come in here as far as commercial uses and retail. But the majority of the reality is it will be an industrial development. So I think I covered everything for now. I'll sit down, if there's any questions, I'm happy to come up. And as, obviously, this comes before you with the Plank Department's recommendation of approval, subject to the conditions for the preliminary plat. But otherwise, we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
My name is Bill Black, and I'm one oh two seven oh, Rainwood Road. I own ninety acres there under High Caliber Holdings LLC. I'm the managing member there. I made copies of everything that I'm about to share with you guys, and there's several neighbors here too that are in attendance, that we were not able to make the Monday night meeting that they had with the neighbors. So I'll start with this. So the property that's being proposed changing is right in this area, the area in the pink is what I own personally. And I've noted a few things on here. And in the packet, you're going to see how many wells are in the area. Just within less than a mile and a half, there's over two dozen water wells in the area. And this is from the University of Nebraska. And the University of Nebraska, this is the aquifer that services the area, and this is where they want to put the industrial. And it's not just industrial, it's high industrial. And according to the city, you know, there can be environmental issues associated with a high industrial area. Our concerns are, many of us are on a well. Zoning of that nature is inviting contamination of the aquifer. It'll increase the noise pollution. You've got the rock crushers going on, you've got the skid loaders and loaders of that sort going on during the day. So heavy equipment needs to operate in this type of a business, and we're opposed to that. It also brings health concerns with hazardous chemicals that could possibly be in a heavy industrial area, asbestos and things of that nature. It'll bring huge problems with rodent population. A lot of us in this area, this is acreage subdivision or area, and quite a few people have horses and other type of animals, and it's hard enough right now to try to keep rodents out of there. And when you start putting in salvage yards and things of that nature, it's going to increase that all the more. Air pollution, you know, possibility of that with the rock crushing and things of that nature going on. And then contamination of storm sewer water runoff from operation like this. And then the other thing is the huge impact, negative impact it'll have on our property values. If you go back to the map here, just within a mile area, we've got several multimillion-dollar properties in there. One of them is right next, right across the street from the property. The assessed value on this, and it's in the packet here, is one point two million. I'm a Realtor by trade, I've been doing it for forty years. I know real estate, I know valuations, and everybody knows that your assessed value is typically not what your market value is going to be. The market value will be higher. But when you have a industrial property next to an acreage division like this, it'll definitely impact that in a negative way. There's another property right here that's well over a million dollars, it'll be backed right up to it. And they're not able to be here, but they did respond to the city planning, and that they, they are adamantly opposed to it as well. And then there's also several neighbors here. And if you don't mind, I can have them all stand up that are here. So anybody here that's a neighbor? So these, this is going to impact all of us, and we're, none of us are in favor of it. So we ask it to be denied. In all of my years of being a Realtor, in the last decade, I don't know of any place where they've allowed high industrial next to residential acreages. It just, it just doesn't exist. So this would be a very rare situation. And I can see commercial, light commercial, I can see light industrial, but heavy industrial, it just doesn't, it just doesn't fit. So I've got a packet here for everybody. I'll give that to you, you guys can peruse it and go from there.
Thank you, Bill. Any other opponents wishing to give your testimony?
My name is Sherry Savick, and I currently lease at The Barn and Horse Property at one zero eight zero eight Rainwood Road. We have, I've got a couple concerns about this. Specifically, the biggest one is with the concrete crushing services. It has been proven with the National Health Industries, that silica dust that comes from crushing that concrete causes issues, respiratory issues with the lungs. It also causes long-term issues on your liver, your kidneys, your brain, and your, and obviously, again, on the lungs. Some of these also causing cancer. I work outside. Yes, the barn is enclosed to an extent, but when it's a hundred degrees outside, everything is open. The winds in this area, especially come winter time, you're talking forty-five mile an hour plus wind gusts coming from the northwest. That is going to hit my entire, it hit my entire business. The noise that's going to come with this concrete crushing is going to be huge. I have a very large program that is youth-based, and horses are a prey species. They're going to do their best to hold together, but ultimately, it's going to take a long time for them to be able to handle that kind of noise safely, and for the kids to safely be able to be around them. Also, the noise that's going to come with the grading, it's going to change. On this property alone, I have not looked at any of the other properties, how it's going to change. We have, our drainage area goes to the north on some of the terraces on this property. That's going to change our entire drainage area. The big grading machines are also going to bring dangers. Again, I've got horses, right, I've got horses on that property. Those big machines that come through, that McCardles and the other grading companies use are huge. They are noisy, they are going to be scary. Large machinery and horses unfortunately do not mix. This is one of the closest barns to Omaha, and has a giant following, and I'm in fact getting ready to push out again and market to a much larger group. Again, I could easily do, in this, I'm currently doing twenty-five lessons a week, and that's after my daughter had a car accident. Otherwise, I was planning on being at almost sixty lessons a week by the end of this year. I'm going to be going up again another forty lessons a week. This is all very possible with where we're at, but they put it in heavy industry with a large equipment. I don't know how comfortable parents are going to be with horses struggling with it, with them spooking. It's definitely, kids and all of that, the horses and the kids do such great things. They help out with depression, they help out with ADHD, they help out with autism. They help keep depression the whole nine yards. These horses are amazing, what they can do for our youth, and what they can do for any of us adults. You put in something with these huge amount of vehicles that are going to be coming, because there is no way that they're not going to be coming all the way up Rainwood Road to go, especially on the backside of this plat. You can only ask the animals to do so much of, they go against their nature so much, and we already do as people. I don't want to lose what this can do for our community and how many people the horses can help out. I don't want to lose this ability to be here.
Thank you, Sherry. Any other opponents?
Hello, my name is David Dinspear, one zero three zero two, Rainwood Road. Most of the points that I would have brought up to you today have already been explained very well. The health impacts, rodents, inevitability. The health impacts, there's a lot of marginalization of what those really are with heavy industry like this. I believe, to a degree, it's inevitable. But one thing that hasn't been brought up, the aquifer was spoken about, the well water was spoken about. But we're also next to a lake that, in my recent memory, the city has spent a lot of money making beautiful. What is the impact of this on a lake that's essentially a stone's throw away, Cunningham Lake? It's been emptied twice since I've been back in Nebraska. And that, I think, is symptomatic of the entire process of putting heavy industry that close to that kind of a beautiful public space. So a lot of work and a lot of money has gone into making Lake Cunningham beautiful. I'm very opposed to any health impacts to the water supply on anyone's property, but in particular, that was never mentioned, and I wanted to make sure we're considering that as well. Thanks very much.
Any other opponents?
Hello, my name is Carrie Brown. I live at one oh nine thirty, North Hundred and Eighth Street. Their development will be surrounding my property. We have owned this property for over a hundred and twenty years. This has been in our family. We are very disheartened by this coming into our area. As most everyone has said, it's going to bring health issues, it's going to detriment to our wells. This is, this is how we live. This is our water, this is our health. We didn't plan on having a junkyard, concrete crushing next to our house. This is a lot of noise, this is a lot of pollution, this is a lot of traffic, and there is already a lot of traffic in the area. On Hundred and Eighth Street, even though this has not been mentioned, there is considerable traffic now, that we have people going in the excess of sixty miles an hour on a road that the speed limit is forty-five. That it is very dangerous for us to even be outside of our property, because we have heavy equipment that is going running up and down our streets. Our actual dog was killed not long ago because said machinery was going up and down our road, and our dog was killed. Also, that needs to be taken into effect, is what is it going to impact on our lives? Like our neighbors who talked about the horse farm, because they are on the other side of us. We are outside all the time. We have twenty-six point seven acres. We farm, we have parties, we have family gatherings, we have family reunions. Our, our car club, we use our property to, you know, get our cars ready to go for all of our car shows. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to be detrimental to all of us that live in this area, including Lake Cunningham as well. Because what is going to be the issue with the water that's going to be possibly contaminated by the concrete dust? What is going on with everything that these people are bringing? I understand, progress is inevitable. No one can, you know, we can't say, no, you can't build. That, that's not what we're saying. We're saying, please take a look, like everyone has said, these are residential land. We all live here. We spend our lives here. Some of us have spent generation and generation and generation that have lived here. And we, we do not want this heavy industrial in our area. We already have enough industrial, as they said, what's getting built across the street. Everyone knows Google is being built across the street. That, that's enough. Our noise just from that, I can sit at my house all hours of the night, three o'clock in the morning, twelve o'clock in the afternoon, eight AM. It is noise constantly. So when these people bring in their business, it's going to add even more noise to that. I look, we can see through our trade area and see Google being built. So the, these people will be literally in our backyard, in our backyard. We do not want to have to look at a concrete crushing, crushing company. We're not going to want to look at a salvage yard. That, I mean, if you understand, it would be no different than it backing up to your house. Our property value is going to tank, just like he had spoke about. That's, that's not okay with us. That's not okay with us at all. Like I said, we've owned these properties over a hundred years. We have built many lives, we have built homes. It's, it's just very disheartening to us, especially as neighbors, that this is going to move in, and it's going to interrupt our entire life. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sherry. Any other opponents? Please give us new information, if you would.
Okay. My name is Joyce Faldis, one one three one three, Bennington Road.
What was your first name?
Joyce.
Joyce, okay.
As everyone has said, I'm not going to repeat it, because you don't need to hear that. My biggest concern, though, is because we're off of Bennington Road, the access that they're talking about coming off of, onto Bennington Road is going to be very detrimental for traffic. That is at just about the crest of a hill, and I do not, I see how they can possibly make it where it would be safe for anybody. There is so much traffic on Bennington Road. We're further down, we have the only actual access to the highway off of our property, and there is times that it's very questionable when I, I'm trying to even get onto my property because of the amount of traffic and how fast it comes over the hill. So it is a very big detriment. My other concern also is, because of that north property, it does drain onto my property, and I'm very concerned of heavy industrial, what it's going to do to the, to, again, the aqua filter, and also to what it's going to do to my property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joyce. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none? Where you get, okay. Please give us new information, if you would.
My name is Deb Raymond. I live on one oh eight, excuse me, one one four, one five, North Hundred and Eighth. I'm on the corner of Bennington Road and Hundred and Eighth. I also have horses. In addition to everything even Bill said, the aquifer, I'm just curious as to this industrial storm water, which will affect the aquifer, also the asbestos, if there's asbestos dump, that dust or tailings they're called, that floats in through the wind, and the health risks associated with that. Heavy metals, that can be seepage into the water, storm water runoff. There's organic chemicals, which are in dyes, paints, solvents, sealants. That is all seepage into the aquifer. I agree with everyone else. I'm against this completely, as well as everyone else has said, our property valuations will be affected by this in a negative, negative way. So I wanted to clarify a little bit more on some of the storm water contaminants, the asbestos, the heavy metals, the organic chemicals. So there's a lot more detail into the seepage that could go in and affect our aquifer, and our private wells, and our, and our waters. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents?
Hi. My English is not very well.
You have to get over to the microphone, kind of pull them down, if you would, a little bit.
Okay.
There you go.
I'm Medelia Arana. I sent a letter with a little sign, a little neighborhood, they signed the letter. And we are not happy, because they are planning to, to put a big building across our house.
Different project.
Right?
Nope, that's not, that was earlier.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
It's okay.
That was the last case, ma'am.
Yeah. And we, we are not happy, all the neighbor are not happy.
Okay, we're not on that, that project any longer. We've moved past that project.
Yeah.
If, if you wanted to speak, you would have had a, that was the case before this case.
Yeah.
This project was.
Okay.
And that's already been voted on. No further action will be taken today.
No more?
I apologize if there is any confusion and you missed it, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we've, we've moved on. So, and I've closed the public hearing to that, to that agenda item. So I'm sorry.
We sent a letter with a little sign and.
We received the letters that will need to go to city council. So you will have another chance to speak on it.
Okay.
But it'll be at a, a later date.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We received the letter though, yes.
Sorry for the confusion. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, are there any other opponents?
Hello, my name is Caroline Skinner. I'm here for my father, Jim Skinner, and myself. Uh, we own the property 10808 Rainwood Road, uh, which Sherri leases from us and we've owned that for over 20 years. I know we don't want repetitious things going on or spoken, uh, but I do really want to hone in on how dangerous like noise sounds are to horses. I am a national and world champion equestrian. One wrong sound landed me on my back with spine surgery and I can't, I can't ride anymore. So this is really dangerous for the kids, honestly. Another point I would like to bring up is before I chose Sherri, um, Burlington Capitals Foundation was interested in the property and I had turned them away. Um, I could see, and that was for their Omaha Equestrian Foundation. And I can't help but think that if the property was with them, that this would not be happening because they know of the dangers. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Brent, I'll give you a chance to come up. Lot of issues to be addressed.
Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. Lots of good questions. Some, I think Cheryl may have come to our neighborhood meeting, but others didn't. And, and usually we like to use those meetings to hammer out some of these questions, but we'll do that here. So I think the, the main themes that I'm hearing is traffic, noise, contamination. So let's talk about how that all works. This dotted line right here, this is Lake Cunningham, uh, one of the opponents had mentioned, this is Lake Cunningham. This is the ridge line on this. All water flows this way away from Lake Cunningham. It is virtually impossible to contaminate Lake Cunningham from anything that's going on with any of these existing industrial uses that are located currently in the gray areas. I think Mr. Black had mentioned that he owns this property right here. This is obviously zoned or master planned for industrial. Uh, but right down here is a scrap and alve, if, if you look at the overhead for it, I think I have one. It kind of, kind of shows it. But there's, there's car scrapping going on down here. Those uses are there today. That noise pollution that I think they talk about is there today. I can't speak to whether or not there is a speeding issue along 108th, but it sounds like there is. But the reality is, is our development, other than the fact that we have to have this connection right here, nobody wants to go east off of our development. The whole reason why this is master planned for industrial is the fact that Blair High Road is right here. And they have to get to the interstate quickly and easily. The other thing I heard a lot about was storm water contamination. So we have three basins, actually four basins on this site. There's one on our north side, two on the south side. They're there for a reason and that's because right here, right here, and right here are all the existing channels where storm water goes. The water flows to the west down to this creek. In fact, we're going to bore a line that's going to go underneath Blair High Road to take the water from the north part of this site down to this stream. So anybody that lives over here, they will get no contaminants, even if there was a possibility that we would have any sort of asbestos or hazardous materials on our site, which we won't, it's going to go to the west. It'll never go uphill because again, this is your ridge line. Everything flows that way. I'm, we want to be good developers and frankly, Mr. Caliberto and Mr. McGill are that. They care about their developments and I would encourage all the opponents to go out to Burlington Park and that industrial development out there and, and take a look at what that looks like. In fact, there is a batch plant out there, right next door, a batch plant, that's one of the concerns. There's a bar right adjacent to it that is filled every single weekend with people. And the reality is, is I've been in front of this board many times for batch plants. Uh, batch plants are everywhere throughout our city. Most of the time, people don't see them. And I get the concerns that whether it's horses or dust, uh, people are concerned about what that might be. But like they mentioned, change isn't inevitable. Uh, this is zoned for a master plan for industrial. And that's what developers do. It, when this ground becomes available, uh, people want to put industrial type uses on there. But the reality of, of any sort of groundwater contamination flowing uphill and contaminating any of these, these acreages over here, that's feasibly impossible. Notwithstanding their concerns about it are legit and hopefully that our conversations with them will continue that. And we're pretty open book and, and I think you've seen me up here enough to know that this is preliminary plat. We still got to go to city council and we got to still come back here. So we want to answer a lot of these questions and we'll always make ourselves available to all these opponents to ask those questions because that's how good development should be done. Let me make sure I got everything else. Um, we'll have a traffic study. That traffic study will obviously go to the city of Omaha and Douglas County and NDOT. They're the ones that control all the traffic study. They're the ones that dictate where these streets go. They dictate the connections and whether or not, uh, how this intersection on, on Bennington Road, I'm sorry, on Bennington Road gets done. Whether or not we have the connection here off of the Blair Service, the Service Road, and then ultimately this traffic signal down here. The, the, the horse issue, um, all I can say on to that is we are still subject to the city of Omaha's zoning code. Meaning there is a noise ordinance that we have to comply with. Currently, this site, which board, this is the horse farm, I believe. Uh, we met Cheryl and her husband the other, the other night. Currently, this whole site is a operating farm. There is cattle there. It's with cattle, become smells, there's methane, there's all those sorts of issues going on right here. This has been a full functioning farm for as long as Mr. Frost, as I understand, has owned this property. I don't imagine a situation that number one, we're going to violate the city of Omaha's zoning code with respect to sound, the sound ordinance. Nor do I think we'll do anything or emit any sort of odors that are any different than what cattle operations are. And again, that's on us. I'm, I'm sensitive to the fact that people don't like to see grading. And that was a lot of the questions that we had at the neighborhood meeting the other night. In a perfect world, uh, we would start grading later this year, but most likely next year. Uh, and that's probably a year's worth of development. So as we told the neighbors the other night, it's probably a year worth of us grading public infrastructure, call it 16 months of work before you see platted lots and that sort of construction activity is done. But otherwise, we get it. It's industrial. It's master planned for industrial. It will be a change for folks. But at the same time, I can represent and look everyone in the eye that you got two developers that know what they're doing. They care about people. They want to be good neighbors. Uh, but, but, but it is a change and we're sensitive to that. So I, I think I covered everything, but if I didn't, please do let me know.
I have a question, Brett. Is this, is this subject to industrial storm water discharge permit?
I'm sorry?
Is this site subject to industrial storm water discharge?
Absolutely, yeah. So all, all sort of, we, we will collect, treat all of our storm water onsite in compliance with all the storm water protection requirements that the city of Omaha, as well as NDEQ, the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality. Anything that touches down here can't be contaminated. We can't be dropping hazardous waste into these streams. I mean, that, that's federal, that's state, that's local as well.
Awesome. Can you address the, the dust control that they use?
Yeah. So one of the things that you probably saw in your packets, but I didn't mention in my initial brief is there is a whole host, and we can share this with, with some of the neighbors that had concerns about how this is actually done. What their, um, their crushing operation looks like, how they control the dust. And so really what it is, is as they bring in concrete, it's unloaded. There are particular, or what do they call them? They're basically moisture guns that shoot very fine mist over all the concrete to control all the dust. It's done in every batch plant in Omaha. And that's why you don't really hear a lot of complaints about it because these guys are really good at what they do. They control that mist. Because if we have an ounce of that dust going onto a farm or a horse or a neighbor, we get calls. And so nobody does that. And so this is a first-class operation that we're bringing in here. We wouldn't have crushing it if we didn't think that they were the best at what they do. And this, this will be their fifth location here in Omaha.
And then the sound, there, what's, what are the sounds? How loud or is it and stuff like that?
Yeah, it's, it's no sound that, I forget the requirements of what our sound can be as it leaves our site, but it doesn't violate and they won't violate anything that's in this, the sound ordinance here in the city of Omaha. But for me to, I couldn't pretend to know what the exact decibel unit is, but it's not in violation of what is allowed under the sound ordinance.
When your document, you said. The current readings average 65 to 70 decibels at 150 feet. So I mean, that's not.
Yeah. So, and, and just to be mindful of that, this is the lot, Mr. Roseacre, that, that use will be on. We have a 70-foot buffer. That's what the green is around all of our property. So that distance over here is well in excess of 150 feet. You're probably five, 600 feet away. Plus, this, this site sits far above and so that sound will likely go that way just because of the natural topography, they sit up higher. We talked to Cheryl and her husband about our grading efforts. We're not going to leave them a knife edge. This will be a nice clean look so their property will flow and look nice. But, um, yeah, that, that sound is, is obviously in compliance with all the zoning ordinances.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions?
Brent, you mentioned that you only have one lot under contract and it's that crush it, crushing it. And that's outside of the heavy industrial zone. Do you have an idea of what is contemplated for the heavy industrial portion of this development?
We don't. Uh, what we wanted to do is we wanted to have an all-encompassing industrial use. You can look at all the allowed uses and those allowed uses are gas stations. You can have manufacturing inside. But really the one that people latch on to is a batch plant. A batch plant is where they make cement. Uh, that is an allowed use here. So you could see a batch plant here foreseeable, uh, but nothing else is currently under contract.
Any additional comments, questions? Eric, thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, just to touch on a few items. Our feature land use map of the city of Omaha's comprehensive plan has basically been in its current form since 1997. That was the, the date of the adoption of the, of the last master plan version. So, um, this area has not been modified from that date. So this area has been designated industrial since at least 1997. I don't know what the map showed prior to that. Uh, so I did just want to stress that. Obviously there's a dividing line on 108th Street that, you know, to the east, it shows low density residential. And then to the west is the industrial, kind of what Brent had alluded to. And, you know, obviously there, there can be challenges sometimes when you have adjacent, you know, use types that are, that can be so different. But the zoning code and the master plan do allow for that and that's how we build in landscape buffer yards. And so, um, the master plan and zoning code do allow, I'm not going to call co-mingling, but, you know, direct adjacency of, of industrial and then residential uses. Obviously, we want to make sure that there is no contamination into any private wells or the drinking water. So we have commentary in the report to, to make sure that there's further coordination between the developer and the applicant with our public works department who deal with these environmental issues as well as the state of Nebraska. So we do have conditions and, and commentary to, to make sure that, um, you know, the highest and best standards are being utilized with this operation or potential uses to account for that. Because obviously we do not want, um, you know, an unsafe, you know, contamination or seepage of, of inappropriate materials into that drinking water. Obviously, we feel the same. We do have public works available if there are questions on access and, and streets. I know a lot of that wasn't necessarily discussed. We talked quite a bit about that in the pre-meeting. Regarding the two proposed lots for HI, um, the city of Omaha, we, we do want to make sure that we are, you know, locking down any potential uses. So there is verbiage in our recommendation about further coordination of what that looks like between the applicant and, and the city of Omaha, both with the law department and the planning department. Uh, you know, there's discussion about development agreement. You know, maybe that's not the best method in conversations with our law department and, and looking more at, you know, a land use deed restriction that, that really ties down, um, you know, to make sure that, you know, the city of Omaha is comfortable with whatever those potential uses are allowed. Of course, the majority of the site is being proposed for GI general industrial, which is, um, the most common industrial zoning district whenever you have new applications that are being brought forward. So specifically for those two HI, those two HI proposed lots, we want to just make sure that there's further coordination. So our recommendation on, on that is, is basically just to continue the coordination. You know, you have two cases on today's agenda. One is, is the plat and the rezoning. And then the other one is the specific special use permit for the scrap and salvage operation, which is the crushing it that, um, that Brent had alluded to. And, you know, we talked about the dust cannon and, and mist. And we, we did deal with this operator on a, um, a nearby site, actually much closer to the downtown area. So, uh, you know, the board, you are a little familiar with some of those conversations that we had in the past few months. The special use permit would not proceed to city council until the final plat does. So, um, you know, that's specifically agenda item number 24. That's not going to proceed, you know, for some time, for whenever that final plat is brought back to the planning board. So, you know, if, if the board does recommend approval of the preliminary plat, you know, that would be the only item at this time that would proceed to city council. You know, I just wanted to, to put that out there. We're comfortable with the proposed operation of crushing it, um, which is the special use permit. There aren't many conditions that are tied to that, just a few landsca, I, I'd have to look. There was just one or two items that need to be addressed as far as the city's codes and recommendations. I don't think I have much else to add unless the board has specific questions either from myself or for public works as it relates to items under their purview. So unless there are questions, I'll read the recommendation. Of course, you can continue conversation or, or ask questions at that time. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to GI for lots 1 through 5, 7 through 17, 19, out lots A through D. And continue to coordinate with city staff regarding the rezoning to HI and a land use restriction for lot 6 and 18. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the 25 conditions in the recommendation report.
Any comments or questions before we have a motion?
I just wanted to make a, kind of a quick comment. This ground has been designated for industrial for 27, close to 30 years. I know that doesn't say much to people that have had homes or acreages out here for a lot of years before that. Unfortunately, as the city grows, you know, development keeps growing and, and getting into people's areas and that they never thought. I remember back in the 60s, um, that was out in the country where you were. I used to, uh, chase cattle, calves up in the hay loft of the Frost, Frost barn. We'd wrestle with them up there. It's been, I mean, you were clear out in the country then and it's, times are changing. We farmed at 204th and Pacific back in the 50s and that farm doesn't exist anymore. Things change. But, uh, I understand people that are living there and have property there and, and unfortunately, change happens. But, um, that's the only comment I have, I guess.
And I'd like to make a comment.
No, sir. Yeah, wait a second. You can't, you can speak, you can't, sir, you can't speak from the. You can't, you can speak, you can't, sir, you can't speak from the, from the audience, and we've closed the public hearing. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, thanks for your remarks. Appreciate that. I agree with what you're saying, and I'll just make a comment, and then I'll make the motion as well. First of all, thank you all for coming out. I know you're taking time out of your day to spend here to give us your testimony. It is important to us. We'd love to hear from you. But Mr. Chairman articulated it very well about how this project or property is designated and so on and so forth. I know Brent is sincere when he says he's transparent. He's been before us, Board, many times. Continue to have the discussions, and I know you will, with the neighbors, because that is important with this. But with that said, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the rezoning from AG to GI for lots one through five, seven through seventeen, nineteen, out lots A through D, and continue to coordinate with the city staff regarding rezoning to HI and a land use restriction for lots six and eighteen, and approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the twenty-five conditions. And there's twenty-five conditions in this report. So, the city has many conditions that they have to meet before this will be approved. Twenty-five conditions in the report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
With those use restrictions on those heavy industrial sites, I do support this, and I will vote yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Agenda Item Number Twenty-Four.
So, specifically, item, case Agenda Item Twenty-Four, this is the scrap and salvage special use permit. So, as I mentioned previously, this would not proceed to city council until the final plat does, which could take some time. It depends on how quickly that comes back to the planning board. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the GI district, subject to the five conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
She used permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the GI district, subject to the five conditions in the recommendation report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Before I vote, Jesse, real quick. You ever thought of changing it from Burlington Park to Frost Industrial Park?
Yeah, we just used Burlington Park because it was, you know, essentially the same group, the same people that did the original one.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's just, just a suggestion. Okay, Leroy Frost is a pretty good guy. Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay, and moving on. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, am I correct there? Yep. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Case C-ten-nine-nine-eight-four. Applicant Derek Reinhardt, request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for West Point. Location, one fifty-five oh four Spalding Plaza. And may we hear from the applicant, please.
Derek Reinhardt, one eight-nine-three-two Nicholas Street. I don't want to have anything other to add than what was on the, what was submitted, but there was one point I want to bring up that it says I'm trying to switch it to kennel use. I'm not looking to house dogs outside just for them to use the restroom and have a little time outside. Kennel, if you look at the zoning, as you guys know, it's like housing dogs outside overnight. You can do whatever you want, basically. But there's really no middle ground of having dogs inside most of the time while allowing them to have bathroom breaks. From my understanding, this has been there since two thousand and seven. Found out it's not in code. I've only been there since two thousand and twenty. But it's been there for seventeen years without any complaints until recently from a new competitor. That's all I got, other than what was in the report, unless you guys had any questions.
Anything for Derek?
So, you're not intending to house dogs overnight or extended stays, anything like that, or animals of any kind, I guess?
Nope, all that's done inside. This is just for, to go to the bathroom outside, play outside for a little bit. That's really it. There's no, Kate, there's no enclosures or anything outside.
You already have an area designated outside for that?
What's that?
You have an area already designated?
Yeah, it's already in place.
It's in place out there, right?
Yep. It's about two thousand square feet fenced-in area, two, one thousand roughly.
How many dogs or animals out there at any time?
In each area, they can be about twenty to twenty-five.
Any complaints from neighbors about the parking or anything like that in the past?
I haven't heard of any. It's been there since two thousand and seven. I've only been there since two thousand and twenty. When I bought the business, it was already in place. I have not had any complaints personally brought to my attention.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Derek.
Yep.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, so, we spent some, a good amount of time discussing this and another one that was on consent agenda that was laid over earlier at today's meeting. There have been several cases that have gone to the Zoning Board of Appeals because this site is zoned mixed-use. That is not an option because of the mixed-use development agreement. As we discussed in the pre-meeting, there are limited zoning districts where the kennel use is allowed, and that is AG zoning, DR zoning, CH, which is commercial highway, and not a lot that exists in the city, and then also GC, general commercial. So, you know, the city acknowledges there are limitations. We are exploring, you know, is it appropriate for other zoning districts, such as specifically the industrial districts, which would not apply to any area that's zoned mixed-use. Those obviously defer to commercial uses and regulations, as is typical. So, we understand, you know, it's challenging when you have animals that need to use the restroom, and, you know, there are some facilities and sites that have special treatments and floors that allow that inside. Others take out their dogs on, you know, staff take them out on leashes, you know, on walks or to relieve themselves. So, we understand that it can be challenging when you do have larger operations. However, you know, we have concern about just the potential negative impact to surrounding properties. Yes, this does appear that it's been functioning this way for quite some time. This is the first time that we had received a complaint based on another case that had gone through the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, we believe it's important, though, that the kennel use is not allowed in commercial zoning, including mixed-use. We believe there can be other operation characteristics that can handle the animals relieving themselves or getting exercise. So, staff recommends denial.
Any additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion? Mike, were you going to say something? Go ahead.
So, this business has been operating this way for a long time. They can continue to operate that way now?
They should not have the outdoor fenced-in areas.
But they've had it?
They have, without proper permitting or without proper permission from the city of Omaha.
And this was a reaction to a complaint from a competitor, is I, am I correct?
It was a complaint from someone who had received a complaint on their operation that went to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And as a result of that, we did send a zoning violation letter to this operator.
Okay, thank you. The way, as a denial, does that mean that the business ends in a certain period of time if they kept everything the same? Or do they have time to adjust and say, we're going to develop an indoor potty area for the dogs? Or how does that work with this denial? Is there things they can do to keep the business in good status in the mixed-use area?
Well, the last sentence in the report says, if denied, the outdoor areas will need to be removed. So, we would be looking at that fencing being removed as soon as possible.
Is that all, would that be all two thousand feet, or, as he says, or would there be any outdoor fencing at all? And I just want, I'm just-
We would not want the fencing. I mean, the actual outdoor area could stay, but the fencing allows those animals to be left out.
So, they would have to walk the dogs or something?
Theoretically, if you had a staff member that had dogs on a leash that go out and they relieve themselves in that outdoor area, that, I think that would be fine, but there's obviously the fine line in that fencing makes it allow them to take them out free rein. I don't know if our director has difference of opinion. You know, I guess we have, you know, sometimes you go to a vet clinic and they have a sign that's posted outside their door, animal relief area. You know, whether it's the staff or whether it's the people bringing in their animals on a leash, they're, you know, maybe utilizing, you know, just that designated area. I mean, that's, that's kind of typical what you would see.
I'm sorry, Eric, I apologize if I missed this, but they could apply for a permit to, the proper permit to put the fence-
No, not allowed. No, because it, basically, you know, you're allowing it to function as a kennel. And I know, you know, when you hear kennel, you're thinking about boarding and places to sleep outside, but that, when you look at the actual definition of kennel, and I'll read that briefly, boarding and care services for dogs, cats, and similar small animals, or any premises on which four or more dogs over four months of age are kept and maintained, not exclusively indoors. Typical uses include boarding kennels, pet motels, or dog training centers. It doesn't have to be a boarding component. It could be a daytime operation, but it's that whenever you have that outdoor potential is when it kicks that over from pet services to kennel. Pet services is defined as retail sales, incidental pet health services, and grooming and boarding of dogs, cats, birds, fish, and similar small animals customarily housed at, used as household pets when performed totally within a building and with no observable external effects. Typical uses include pet stores, small animal clinics, dog bathing, and clipping salons, and pet grooming shops, but exclude uses for livestock and large animals.
I go, I go for a walk, and on my walk route, there's a animal service business that has a area outside of their business, not fenced in, where I see them walking their, their dogs outside to relieve themselves. So, that's permissible. That's what I would suggest, Derek, that you do with this, quite honestly, because-
He's over here.
Where is he? There. Yeah. That's what I suggest you do.
Yeah, I kind of knew that was-
You need your name and address again if you're going to speak.
What's that?
Please, enter your name and address.
Oh, yeah, Derek Reinhardt, one eight-nine-three-two Nicholas Street. The only, just, I wanted to comment on the walking the dogs. We know these dogs, but we don't, they don't necessarily listen to the commands of us when it comes to like walking on the street or even walking outside. Some dogs aren't leash-trained. It's very, it'd be very, for that to be allowed and not to have them fenced in in a safe environment is not, I know, like, there's just no middle ground here with the code with kennel and pet services. There's no, don't house the dog outside, don't even let him go to the bathroom. It's like, they're either completely inside or not outside at all. But if you take a dog on a leash, there's some big dogs that come in there, we don't know. They could break off the leash. They could harm people walking on the street, walking next to wherever we're taking them outside. Of course, we can do it in a safer area, but these aren't our dogs that we're caring for. And we do the best we can, so we have like an eight-foot fence, so they can't jump out. It's not even visible. You can't see through the fence. There's been no nose complaints. I mean, there's been no complaints. It's just like, there's not a middle ground here where these dogs can safely relieve themselves. Some dogs will go to the bathroom inside, some won't, and some will hold it, which will cause health issues to that dog. If they hold it until they get home, it causes them to have anxiety when they, when they're holding it all day, waiting for their, waiting for their owner to come and take them outside. We do know there are options to do stuff inside, but that doesn't create, we, we're part of a franchise, and those other places that have done that, the play, the HVAC systems can't handle that. It's just, you can put in the turf, you can put in the drainage, it just can't handle, and it just reeks the whole place up. That's why we didn't do that.
Business that had inside, completely inside, everything was inside, and you walk in there and you immediately smell, so I get what you're saying. I'm just telling you, your options are limited, so if, if, if you can do it, you ought to try and find a way to do it, honestly. I know what you're saying. There's no middle ground. And I sympathize with you, I truly do. But I think you ought to try and find some options.
But you guys are able to offer that option, like an option to this middle ground. What's that?
Take that fence down. Unleash them.
Unleash them.
I know.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's move on.
Yeah.
There aren't any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion denied.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
No.
Soto Longo?
No.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, denial.
So, just for clarification, Kathy, the recommendation is denied by a vote of four to three, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's- The motion was to deny your request, so it's, it's been denied?
Four.
So, this can proceed to city council. Derek, continue to coordinate with city staff on the next steps. Thanks.
Okay.
Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Case C-ten-dash-twelve-dash-one-seventy-nine, C-ten-dash-twenty-four-dash-one-sixty-nine, C-eleven-dash-twenty-four-dash-one-seventy. Applicant Parkway Development Company, LLC, have request rezoning from GC to TOD to MX with approval of a PUR Plan Unit redevelopment overlay district, along with the repeal of the ACI overlay. Location, northeast of Thirty-Sixth and Leavenworth Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Randy Koushak with Lampre Nielsen, one-four-seven-ten West Dodge Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, Parkway Development. Ryan Spellman with Parkway Development was unable to join me today, and he has his regrets for that, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I'll give you a quick run-through for the project, since I believe this is the first time anything's come before you. I believe TIF is hopeful to be coming in a month or so. But this project's located on the east side of Thirty-Sixth Street to Thirty-Fifth Avenue, north of Leavenworth Street. The site is locked in pretty well with some transmission lines for OPBD, which run directly on the north side of Leavenworth Street, and in the alley back behind the site. So, the design of this site, we're looking at an eighty-six-unit apartment building. It'll be a four-over-one podium-style apartment building with parking in that first level, and then four levels of residential up above it. Great care was taken in the development of this site to not have any issues with OPBD. Our first meetings were with OPBD and their transmission folks to have that, this building comply with the OSHA requirements for setbacks to transmission lines. So, as you can see here, this is the side of the building that will face Leavenworth Street. There's two primary entries that occur facing Leavenworth Street on the southeast corner, and one on the southwest corner. The site generally grades from high on the northwest to low on the southeast. So, we mostly have fully exposed garage on the south Leavenworth face, and then on the east Thirty-Fifth Avenue face. On the south elevation, it faces back towards the residential uses to the north. It doesn't show it really great here, but I'll show you an example, or show you an exhibit here shortly that kind of shows what we're doing. The building will be a solid face of apartments that are on Leavenworth Street, and then there'll be three individual double-sided apartment unit pieces that stick back towards the residential. And so, I've highlighted those spots here. Basically, this point would be apartments that project back towards, or towards the north. The center piece would be towards the north, and the other piece would also go to the north, with central courtyards in between each, and those would be connected on the far north side of the site. So, with that in mind, I'll show you that site plan that maybe shows that a little bit. So, that's generally how the site would lay out, with apartments along Leavenworth Street, and those would project back for each one of those legs with central courtyards and amenity space up on top of the parking deck. That parking deck would relate in elevation pretty similar to the alley, but the alley drops as you go east with full garage exposure on the far east. I mentioned eighty-six apartment units. These are planned to be market rate. We propose to park in compliance with the TOD code, fifty-nine parking spaces for those eighty-six units. The developer is aware of that tight parking count, and that is a consideration in their business model. There is a bus stop located at the corner of this site at Thirty-Sixth Street. We're in communications with Metro on making sure that we have that bus stop upgraded and where it needs to be with, with their concerns there. There are several items in the staff report that we'll be continuing to work with staff on building transparency and on the landscaping that we can do underneath those transmission lines with OPBD. So, we'll continue to coordinate with staff on those items, as well as some elevation requirements with some of the units at the northwest corner on the first residential floor of the site, and how those relate to that sidewalk. We're proposing to add a on-street parking stall on the east side of the site and upgrade the street scape along Leavenworth Street, or all three sides. As you can see, the site is maximized to the most degree we can to get as many parking stalls. That podium will stretch across the entire- That podium will stretch across the entire site with the building not covering all of the podium. That's with trying to maximize that parking to, to get those ratios as positive as possible. But as you're aware, this Leavenworth Street corridor is a corridor that is, has large employers on it with U N M C. That's part of the business model and, and, and those users, the experiences that it, it does find a way to go to those parking ratios. So with that in mind, and the, and the transit corridor and transit development that is here, we hope to find your approval today, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Randy. Any other proponents?
My name's Dave Arthlet, one six six three two Francis Street. My wife Gina and I are principals in D Bar Enterprises. We've been doing redevelopment in this corridor for about eighteen years. We hit up to about a hundred doors, seven apartment complexes, complexes all within a couple of blocks of here. And we currently still own twenty-three houses, pretty much in this neighborhood. I'm for this, I'm for this development. I like the way that it was laid out. It's going to be really good for the neighborhood. Couple of things is, this is, what sits on this right now is old Family Dollar. And it's a very, very tough building. It's abandoned, and it's an eyesore. It's been an eyesore even when Family Dollar was in it for years ago. So that alone is really, really going to help the neighborhood. Parking's always an issue. One of the things being down in this neighborhood every day that I see is a lot more people waiting for the bus, a lot of diversified people, construction workers, nurses, doctors, things like that, that are riding this corridor. And that's only going to increase. In a world's best scenario, everyone would have a parking spot. But if we want density in the city, we just, we just, we have to, that's just one of the sacrifices we have. A lot of the houses in this neighborhood do have driveways, so people do have places to park. And I believe that the neighborhood can absorb the parking. It's done so over and over again, and I've been seeing it for eighteen years. So I think it's a good project, and I, I hope it goes. One other thing, I am a tenant in this building, the Family Dollar, the only tenant in there. I, I do have a shop in this building. I had a long-term lease on this building. The owners approached me to relinquish that lease so they could go ahead with this project, which I did. Shop space is hard to find, and I did it just for the good of the neighborhood, because that's what a good developer should do.
Thank you, Dave. Any, any other proponents? Seeing none of there any opponents? Seeing none of them, close the public hearing, additional comments, questions?
Eric? Yeah, I don't have much to add. Obviously, Randy touched on, you know, coordination with the O P P D, and obviously they're aware of that, so that's good. You know, and obviously, you know, I've already said a couple of times, either in the pre-meeting or here in the regular meeting, that, yeah, I mean, this stretch of Leavenworth, there is a lot going on, there's a lot of projects, but also a lot of need for housing, and especially everything that's happening at the Med Center and, and the close proximity to, you know, Midtown and Blackstone and, and, you know, Mutual's current sites and downtown. So we're excited by the project, and it is compliant with the T O D parking regulations. There are just a few items that Randy had mentioned that we'll continue to coordinate with them on for final plans. But staff recommends a repeal of the A C I overlay, approval of the rezoning from G C to T O D two M X, and approval of the P U R overlay district, subject to submitted final plans prior to city council.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the repeal.
Of the A C I overlay, approval of the rezoning from G C to T O D two M X, and approval of the P U R overlay district, subject to submitted acceptable final plans prior to forwarding to city council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Paige?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Item number twenty, case C ten dash fourteen dash eighty-one. Applicant Quantum Real Estate LLC request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Antler View East, location southwest of Hundred Eightieth and West Maple Road. May I overhear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Scott Brown, nineteen twenty-five North Hundred Twentieth Street with Quantum Real Estate. I'm not aware of any opposition, so just here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Any other proponents? Seeing none of there any opponents?
Jeff Christensen, thirty-two oh five North Hundred Eighty-fourth Street. Elkhorn. I am opposed to this project because I, I currently office across from a sports complex, the U B T Center on Cumberland Drive. And they are saying that they have enough parking here, but the overlap between the people that are coming and going, it, and it doesn't line up. And our, our office is, is constantly used as the overflow parking. And we try to have a business there. We have a showroom and people coming and going. It could work in that neighborhood on Cumberland Drive if there was enough parking, but it really doesn't do a very good job. This I'm very concerned with because they show some parking on a commercial lot here and then down here off that corner. And with the new Costco store across the street, Hundred Eightieth is, is carrying a lot of traffic. And a lot of this traffic going down to the Antler View Apartments is they use that, that main street. And so I'm concerned about the traffic of the people crossing the street to that sports complex. And then also the buffer yards that have been relaxed. I'm against, they should be putting in all the landscaping on this property if this is going to get approved at, per the, the city requirements. And so I'm against the, this project for this residential neighborhood.
Just wanted to say, Jeff, the, yeah, the U B T parking's been a pebble in our shoe for a couple of years. But I think the planning department's learned a lot from the parking problems, that route in U B T, and they applied, you know, that knowledge towards this, this project, so. Your, your parking lot, Christensen Lumber, is that you?
Yes.
That's part of U B T's usage, isn't it, that you?
They, they, in our lease agreement.
Yeah.
They asked us to give them parking. Well.
How's that working for, for you guys?
It does not work.
Does not work.
Because when they have events that, when school is out and they're having tournaments, let's say, we still are operating, when the school is off, we're still operating a business. And they'll come in, starting at seven in the morning or before, and start utilizing the parking in our front. We try to tell them, well, you can come around back, but there isn't a great deal of parking behind the, our building. And so, no, it, it, it doesn't work. And I'm concerned for the, the residential neighborhood because it's adjacent to this. And so again, I'm more concerned about the relaxation of the buffer yards. If we're relaxing, planting trees and shrubs and things, that shouldn't be relaxed when you're putting a, a very tall building on a lot. And this particular lot sits really high, so you're going to see it from virtually anywhere around in the neighborhood. So.
Has the parking situation at U B T gotten any better since they developed that, the lot that's closest to Dodge Street? That third building that got developed and added new parking that was supposed to ease a lot of those issues? And I've.
No.
I know the answer because I've been there, but I'm just.
No. It has not, it's not enough. And it's, and it's a lot of times, the, the parents and the grandparents and, and everything that are coming to these events, and then they leave, and then the other people are trying to find a parking spot. And so it's, it's the overlap where it's, it's, really doesn't work.
Unfortunately, when I had grandkids playing, I still do have some, but, you know, for, for one grandkid, we might have four or five cars there.
Right.
For one. Yeah, it, it's a tough situation.
So.
Thank, thank you, Jeff.
You bet.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing. Scott, did you want to come out and talk about parking?
Mr. Christensen, can I borrow that for one second?
Sure.
Thank you. Scott Brown, Quantum Real Estate, nineteen twenty-five North Hundred Twentieth Street. Couple of, of items. First and foremost, the buffer yard, the buffer yard reduction, buffer yard is only on Eric Wolf's property, which is located right here. We still have a thirty-foot buffer yard between the commercial and the residential over here. And so that's the only buffer yard reduction we, we've asked for. And Eric Wolf has not opposed that, and Eric has a, currently has a house right here. And I've had numerous, well, I've had a couple of discussions with him. Nothing about the buffer yard, but he's, he's happy with his property. As far as parking, this is probably, the biggest learning experience I've had in commercial real estate has to do with parking. We have time, this is for the last item here. Okay, U B T, I have three kids. I've been at U B T since it's opened. I have been a part of the waiting half an hour, missing my kids' games. To most recently, I live a mile away and my wife Ubers to my kids' volleyball events. And so I completely understand. I've parked in your parking lot, Mr. Christensen. It is an absolute disaster. With that, we've worked with planning department extensively, and we've been, we've probably brought this to their attention. I have to look at this maybe back in October, a year and a half ago. Planning Department has done extensive studies on this. And I know Eric has been at U B T on numerous occasions, personally doing parking studies himself. And so we have gotten to the point where planning department has come up with a, a number here, which is five point four seven parking stalls per thousand square feet for the facility. To put that in perspective, I think U B T's at three point two five without the additional parking stalls. I think they're three point two five or three point five. Eric probably knows this off the top of his head-ish. Now, if we did a Sam's Club or a Costco on this site, and again, please correct me, Eric, that's four cars per thousand if we do a, a major retailer, is that correct, big box? Yeah, that's the ratio for, yeah, big box retail. So what we are under the requirement with planning department is a, a higher standard here of five point four seven stalls per thousand square feet, which is thirty-eight percent more parking stalls than if we did a big box at this location. So parking, yes, we have a parking field that's going to cover a thousand eighty-eight stalls for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand square feet. It is going to be a massive parking field. If we only, if we did a big box, it would be seven hundred and forty stalls, I think, off the top of my head. Second item is circulation of traffic. This location will accommodate a lot of traffic and a lot better manner than U B T. I've been stuck out there on Two Hundred and Tenth, I think it's Two Hundred and Tenth Street, waiting to get in or waiting to get out. There's one way in, one way out. In our situation, this site here, Hundred Eightieth Street is down here on the bottom of the page. And this is West Maple Street. And for the sports complex, there will be access to Hundred Eightieth, which is a lit intersection, a Hundred and Eighty-third Street, which is a lit intersection, Big Elk Parkway, which is a lit intersection, along with Big Elk Parkway and Emma Street, which takes you all the way out to Hundred Ninety-second Street. This, this street right here will take you to Hundred Ninety-second Street, and that eventually will be a lit intersection as well. So I think, I completely agree as far as being a parent, the issues we, we, we currently have at U B T. But I feel like we've done a very good job of creating the perfect site for having a sports complex. And the access is there, the parking is there. And we have numerous requirements by the planning department that are higher than, than a big box, and we're willing to, to do all that. And, and it's something that's needed in our town. As a parent, the lack of courts is amazing. And so the legislature went, went through this year and created a new sports complex, or they amended the Sports Complex Financing Act to allow more sports complexes for more kids use sports. And so hopefully we'll be having this problem solved by having some public financing to go with these sports complexes to make them financially viable.
Scott, are you going to operate the facility?
Nebraska Elite Volleyball, the largest Midwest operator in the country, in the, in the region. They've turned down, they turned down a couple hundred kids, I think, this year. And so they need more courts. Both my daughters play for them currently, and they're going to have twelve volleyball courts at this location, plus six more basketball courts that'll be converted into volleyball as well. And this will be used just for more courts for tournaments. And we're trying to keep more teams in town. We travel extensively. I was in, I was in Orlando, Florida, the last two weeks for, for national tournaments. And this is more courts to allow us to have more tournaments here in Omaha, which is needed.
That question is, is the ownership is, he brought up a, a good point, which is, Jeff brought up a good point, which is, you know, a lot of these traffic issues are because all of the events kind of run together. That there's, there's no, there's no real gap between events, and everyone's trying to get in and out at the same time. Is there a way that you can convince the operators of the business to maybe try and schedule things so that there's not an overlap of events all the time?
They all run on the hour. So in theory, yes. And, and right now, the way they're going to do it is when there's basketball going at the same time as volleyball, basketball be in the half an hour and the volleyball be on the hour. But as things, some volleyball games are longer, some basketball games are shorter, it'll probably have overlap. They have, they're also a tenant in U B T. And my understanding is they're going to continue staying there as well. But yes, they, they're trying to correct the problems they currently have with a better facility.
I know the more usage, the more money is made. Obviously, rights of business, right, they're in the business to make money. But it would certainly be in a benefit, I think, that whole area if they could do that. Otherwise, you're just going to get nothing but congestion out there.
Completely agree. And they also need to have parents not coming in griping because they miss their kid's volleyball game, looking for parking. It's a. Sorry.
I, I, my grandson plays baseball, he plays at Zeransky Park. Try and park there on a seven fifteen game when you've got two, you know, four fields and people coming in and out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's all the sports facilities, these sports facilities are that way.
So, Mr. Christensen, I understand your, your concerns, and I, and, and we've done absolutely everything we can to address them. This is a facility that's going to be here for twenty to fifty years, hopefully, and we want it, we're going to do it right.
I, I think to, to Mike's point, instead of having maybe ten minutes between games, if you had twenty minutes between games, that would make a huge difference.
They will be the owner-operator, so yes, they will make sure they can do, do their best to keep the parents happy, kids on time, and people not too far away from the facility.
Eric, is there a, a use permit tied to this? Like for U B T, when things got bad, we, we were able to hold that over the owner and say, if you don't fix this, we will revoke your condition. I, I think it was a conditional use permit that he had. Does, is, does that exist here? I mean, I don't, I have a lot of concerns, but I don't necessarily want to hold this up. But if we have a way of, you know, if it, if there's an issue a year or two down the road that we can bring, I don't know if it's Mr. Brown or the operator, whoever, back and say, hey, you need to get this figured out?
Yeah, so slightly different zoning mechanism, but it does have the mixed-use development agreement. I don't know the exact wording in the, you know, for bringing them back. But yes, if they are not in compliant with basically the operation plans that are submitted in as part of this major amendment in the site plan, if there are issues, yes, there is that ability to, to bring them back. It's slightly different than the conditional use permit, but just a slightly different zoning tool. Okay. Scott, is, I don't believe Nebraska Elite, they don't do the basketball, right? Or are they, so they'll have a, a leasing?
They'll have a tenant, a, a basketball operator. It'll go through the process of, of finding the right, the right party. Not there currently, but they will be convertible courts. There are probably, I don't even know, there, there's a lot of tournaments in town as far as for volleyball. So they're going to be convertible into volleyball for tournament play. But when they're not in use, like during the week, they will be basketball. But there is no operator at this point.
Okay. And I would, I would just stress, you know, what's already been said about the operations. Yes, obviously, we have been working together on this for quite some time. And, you know, I think we've made it abundantly clear, just our concerns and not wanting to get off on the wrong foot. Like, I would acknowledge that happened at, at U B T. I guess we, you know, you know, we got behind and we were in catch-up mode for a number of years. And I feel like we got to a better place, at, at least as far as the city looks at it and having compliant parking on, on paved stalls. Obviously, we were dealing with parking on grass and, you know, other situations out there that is a little bit different than what we're dealing with here. But I just want to continue to encourage. want to continue to encourage, if there are issues, you know, whatever your role may be moving forward, or if that's with the operator, you know, letting them know that if there are issues, just continue to, to work with the city in finding solutions, you know, just want to stress that. But yes, we are comfortable based on the analysis and, and a lot of upfront work that we did. You know, this wasn't on a planning board agenda until, you know, this month, so you haven't seen, the board hasn't seen that behind, you know, the work that, that was put into it in leading up to this submittal. So just continue to encourage that coordination if there are issues and, and we, but we hope there aren't, obviously. But, you know, just because there are a lot of traffic and, you know, and full parking doesn't necessarily mean there's an issue. Sometimes people just have to walk a little bit further and, you know, I guess I, I would just state that, especially as we look at the infill projects and other stuff that's been on, you know, this month on the agenda as well as others. So I don't know if you have any other discussion points? I can read the recommendation report, and of course you can continue accordingly. I don't think I need to, to get into a lot of the items in the recommendation report, but there are some items that will have to be finalized before the mixed-use agreement goes to City Council, both from a public works and a planning aspect. Staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Antler View East, subject to submittal of five acceptable. Signed copies of the amendment prior to forwarding to City Council.
Do we have a motion? Dave? Before we do that, I'd just like to comment, more of an observation maybe for Jeff's benefit is that because of the last, and we've alluded to everything that you're experiencing and, and all of the machinations that the, the planning department and everybody's gone through to try to find a way to resolve that, I think this project is, is a, is a direct beneficiary of all those difficulties, and, and with the cooperation of, of the applicant, there's, there've been a lot more accommodation taken in this as I've related to the, the square footage per car, parking place and all that stuff. But I think even beyond that, what Scott referred to is this site is so much more flexible and, and compatible for this type of use than that other site was, with all the different accesses to the main thoroughfares, and then even the fact that you've got large parking lots, you know, relatively adjacent to it, though they're not supposed to do that, but in a case of an overflow, there at least are opportunities there without going into the neighborhoods and tying up the traffic. So I just, I don't know how much more that, that the city can do on a application like this than what has already been done to try to provide as much parking as is reasonably allowable. Okay, do we have a motion? Thank you, Dave. Yes, I'll, I'll make a proven, or make a motion to approve the major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Antler View East, subject to submittal of five acceptable, signed copies of the amendment prior to forwarding to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
We're just a result of coming late.
Oh.
Just waiting to ask about that case sixteen.
Well, just a second.
It's fine.
Do we have a motion? We'll close the meeting first, then we'll talk to you. All right, do we have a motion on last month's pre-meeting and public meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the last month's pre-meeting and public meeting minutes?
We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
I think, yes.
Yes.
Still on the wall. There's not too much. Still on the wall. Still a little bit, yeah.
Just a second. I won't...[1743.53]